I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the National Board of Education, Monday, August 13, 2018, at 7:02 PM. My name is Raymond Guarino. I am the clerk. I'm filling in for Dottie Oden, who is not feeling well tonight. She is our board president. So I would like Ms. Porter is filling in for me as clerk. And can you please take the roll call?
I can. Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I'm here.
Here, and you're alone?
I am alone.
Excellent. Mrs. Oden is not here. Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Mrs. Ho Hensy?
Here.
And are you alone?
Yes, I'm alone.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Present.
Mrs. Porter is here. Ms. Sweeney?
Here.
And Mr. Gillis?
Here.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Other attendees, we have Dr. Mosley, Dr. McKinney, Ms. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Donovan, and Ms. Guerra has left. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
If we could please stand, I'd like to lead a prayer. And then following the prayer, Ms. Porter will lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doris?
Yes?
Are you able to mute at your end, because we're hearing a baby crying?
Okay.
Thank you.
Our first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Hearing none?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I do have a question relative to communications. There was an email exchange that we received that was pulled out of the communications list today, and I don't understand why. Because that's not confidential.
Can I respond?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
I, there was a communication that was included in the original correspondence of communication outside the consent agenda. So what was emailed to all of you was that edit, and there was some information that should not have been contained on that original one. So a new correspondence went out with those edits. And so what I'd be looking for is a motion to approve the revised version of that correspondence when that comes about. And that revision was sent out via email.
Right, but the correspondence was sent to the board. It is already public. I don't know how you can make something by pulling it out of the consent agenda. We've already received it as the board as a public document. So I don't understand how by withdrawing it, it's already out in the public. So to me, it just seems to be a conflict of trying to pull a document that is already in public, and I think the public-
Well, it's going to be added later. Is that correct?
Correct. I have the, what was, I have a printed copy of the revised version of the correspondence, and you also received a copy of that via email.
I'm talking about the content, not the list.
That will be available later, I believe.
Yeah. So for the record, the revised agenda will go into the record if the board votes it in.
I'm concerned about the content, not the listing of the, well, both the listing of the email that we received, it should be recorded as received, and yet we still haven't, at this board, come to think of it, we still haven't figured out how do we communicate the, we list the communications we receive, but we do not provide anybody the communications we receive. So that has to get resolved as well.
That question is an ongoing question, I guess, so.
I'll send Mrs. Oden a request to put that on the next agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So I am going to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
A sec.
Please take the vote.
So the motion was made by-
Ms. Raymond?
And seconded by Ms. Van Twyver?
I did.
You did. Okay, thank you. I'm just checking. Okay. All right. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter says yes. So that's one, two, three, four, six, eight yes and one no.
Two no's.
Two no's. I'm sorry. Okay.
Six and two.
Who voted? So it was Mr. Kaufman voted no?
And Ms. Ho Hensy.
I'm sorry. I thought she said yes. I misunderstood.
No problem.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. Eight yes and two no.
The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Porter. Okay. Next on the agenda would be communications outside the agenda, communications outside the agenda. Okay. Public question, comment period, limited to items on the agenda. I'm sorry, did I skip? I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I just, for clarity, the emails in question would have been outside the consent agenda or part of the consent agenda? Because now I'm confused.
It was part of the consent agenda, and what I was asking the board to do is to approve the motion for the revised, the one that was sent through email, of the email correspondence list.
Okay.
That was sent by Mrs. Consella, as well as, I have a hard copy of it for tonight.
In fact, that's what we did approve.
Yes.
When the board had it subsequently approved.
Yes. Okay. I just was confused there for a second, and I wanted to be clear before we move on.
No problem.
It was an oversight.
Okay. So we are moving on to the public question, comment period, limited to items on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak about items on the agenda? Seeing none. We're going to move on to superintendent's comments.
Well, it's hard to believe, but we're getting ready for school and to start school. First, I want to welcome back Patrick and Haley. How you doing? You look, you know, refreshed, revised, and ready to go. So welcome back. It's good to get the band back together. We're not quite back together, but I'm glad to see you guys back. Couple of things. I emailed out to the board, this week we're going to have our administrative retreat with our administrators and directors in the district. And so that's always a nice time for us to do some reflection on what we accomplished last year, but also our goals for this year. Couple of topics we're going to cover for the admin leadership. We're going to touch upon leadership. We're going to do some cultural competency. Of course, we're going to dive into our, you know, the process of strategic planning, our timeline, everything we've talked about here at the board. But more importantly, we're really going to really be able to come together year two with the same group of people, for the most part, including Garth, myself, and Donna, and really start to plan out this year and to make sure that we are all on the same page. All of our, we've got some new people joining us. If you haven't been watching, we've got some new people joining us at the secondary level with our assistant principals. We've got some new administrators at the elementary schools. So it's getting together with some old faces, but also welcoming in some new faces as well. I will provide the board with an update on some of our activities that we participated in at our last, at the, excuse me, at our admin meeting this week. August 21st through the 23rd will be our new teacher orientation for all of our new teachers who are joining us in the district, and we're looking forward to getting them acclimated to our district, meeting their principals, their colleagues, their mentors, their coaches, the assistants, superintendents, myself, and looking forward to making sure that we welcome our new teachers to the district as well. My favorite time, because I say it's favorite time, but maybe people don't think it's a favorite time, but I think it's nice for the community. We have our August 23rd is our back-to-school night hosted at the library. It's always fun for our kids and for adults. There's plenty of food, entertainment, plenty of pencils, erasers, and it's really nice to come out and see our schools and school spirit and our administrators, and it was an exciting time last year. I don't know if you had a chance to go, but certainly it's just, it's a lot of fun. I really appreciate there's some high school kids that volunteer, Boys and Girls Club. I mean, it's a really nice event for our kids. I would be remiss, and I really don't know the answers, the names of the people, but I just have to say this publicly. I always believe that there is angels out there, and I don't say that to be funny or facetious in any ways. I really mean that. And what I mean that is that we had a family that donated at the Birch Hill Elementary School. They donated over $100,000 of funding for computers for our kids, and they asked that they not be named or acknowledged in any way. And I just wanted, I don't know who they are. I don't know. I sent them a letter, but I just want to say on behalf of the district and of the educational community, just thank you. That was very, very generous of you, and your gift to us will not, will not be forgotten. I want to take another opportunity to congratulate our summer school graduates, graduates that took place on July 31st. Our seniors worked very, very hard to make sure that they completed their high school journey. I appreciate Mike McQuillan and Lori Rothhouse for all of their work, and for the kids that stuck with it and made sure that they got their degrees. It was a nice ceremony. It's on our, on the cable TV if you had a chance, but certainly congratulations to those kids. Finally, I'd just like to say thank you to our summer programs, our future scholars, our blast-off programs that are taking place in our elementary, high school, middle schools. I appreciate the teachers who have taken the time to work the summer, to be with our kids, the kids who have taken the time to be there. I appreciate your time being there. It's always a lot of laughs and a lot of fun. We had it, I say the collective, we, the board, some of the administrators had a chance to go over to Fairgrounds Elementary School to see the programs there, and nothing but good work and excitement over there. So I really appreciate everyone's hard work, and thank you so much for what you do for our kids. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Board response to superintendent's comments. Go ahead, Mr. Kaufman. Thank you. Dr. Mosley, you mentioned that there was a new teacher orientation on the 21st through the 23rd.
Yes.
So I'm curious, does that include, or will there be supplementary training around the safety training that was given to our staff at the end of the school year that was to be repeated at this time? We talked about it as a new member, a new teacher orientation, the board as well. So I'm just curious if that is included, or it's been planned, or, and when that would be.
Yes, that's part of the training. I mean, part of the new teacher orientation. I believe it's going to, Dr. McKinney, is that happening on that Friday or that Thursday? I think it's on that Thursday. But it is part of the training.
Police department is coming in to do that two and a half hours again?
They're going to be there to give our new teachers the safety training.
I would like to attend if I can. We weren't notified the last time, as I thought we were going to be.
Sure.
And if you could let me know when that is, if I'd like to attend if I can.
Sure. Is it on that Thursday?
It's on Friday, 8 to 10. It did go out, Stacy Heinz, I believe, sent it out in E-News, and I did see an email to the board, but it'll be right here in this room.
I don't recall an email to the board inviting us to the orientation.
I'll forward it to you right now.
Thank you. And I do have another question as it relates to orientation. Will there be a substitute teacher orientation this year?
We will have a orientation for substitute teachers. It's just a question of how we plan that. So tentatively, there wasn't something planned for the substitute teachers, just the teachers who are, like, under contract, who are going to be here. So as, again, the substitute teachers, it's a, if we can get a collection, a, I'd say a group of substitute teachers who are going to be here for the duration of the school year, be happy to provide them with some training. I think any training for any teacher, substitute or regular teacher, would be helpful. The substitute teacher pool, as you know, is very fluid. It's always, we could have 25 substitute teachers, or, you know, sometimes 10. With that said, if you recall, at the high school level, we have four permanent substitute teaching positions, and so those individuals are certainly, if we can, if we have those positions filled, be more than happy to provide the training. And I don't mean by training, you know, safety training, but just kind of routine training in terms of everyday schedules, what to expect as a substitute teacher, but also, you know, going back to the new teacher orientation, it's important that new teachers actually know the responsibility of making sure that there's subplans available, making sure when they're out, to make sure that there's adequate work for the kids to do. So it kind of works both ways.
No, I appreciate that. I've substitute taught here in Nashua. I'm on the list to substitute again in the Merrimack High School. Never thought I would enjoy the high school, but I did. And I can tell you, as a sub, just knowing the floor plan of the building and what to do when that fire alarm, you know, the, you know, we run the fire drills all the time. We have to do 10 a year. So just knowing what to do and what to take, and, I mean, I think it's extremely valuable, so I'm glad to hear that something is in the pipeline. So thank you.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Van Twyver, do you have any comments? Ms. Ho Hensy, can you hear me? Do you have any comments on the superintendent's comments?
No comments at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Porter? I'm going around the room. Ms. Timmons?
No comment.
Ms. Raymond?
No, thank you.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I believe that everything is covered very succinctly.
Thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations to our graduates who graduated in the summer, to them and their family. Thanks for sticking it out and hanging in there. Congratulations. Moving on, student members and board comments. Ms. Sweeney?
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to say, just wanted to say that it's good to be back after a little break. I think I can speak for both Patrick and myself when I say that we had a great time at the Advanced Studies Program, and we're looking forward to the year ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Gillis?
Yep, happy to be back. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
Hope you're having a good summer. Moving on, the next on the agenda is the Committee on the Budget. Do you have anything to report? Mr. Kaufman? No, we're probably going to be dormant until the new chair gets appointed in January. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Committee on Finance and Operations. We have had a number of items on the list. The first is nine contracts. I'm not, I'm not going to go through every contract, but they're special ed contracts such as occupational therapy, special needs. If anybody has any questions on the first nine bullet points, I believe Mr. Donovan hopefully can, can help them with that. Mr. Kaufman? Thank you. I noticed that they were all budgeted items, Mr. Donovan. I'm just curious, year over year, are they generally flat expenses? Did they incur increases year over year? If you could just give us a brief idea.
There are, a number of them are flat. I would say, one, two, I guess.
Because I remember the physical therapy people have been very kind to us over the years, for several years, if in fact, where they were able to hold their costs, so.
Okay, the physical, the occupational therapist, that's the first one, Clark and Associates, that has a 2% increase.
Okay.
And then Boothby and Carroll are even, but those are lump, sort of not-to-exceed amounts, so based on number of services. The physical therapy, the Amy McCartney ABC Physical Therapy, that's a 3% increase. And then the next two, the nursing ones are lump sum type things, too. It'll be based on usage. And then, just looking at the other ones quickly, they're, they're pretty much the same as they were last year. So it's just those two that have the increases.
Thank you. And thank you to the vendors who are helping us contain those costs. Does anyone else have any questions or comments regarding the nine contracts? Okay. Ms. Timmons?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this Committee on Finance on nine bullet points dated on July 17, 2018.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are we ready for the vote?
Okay, so we have a motion to approve all nine contracts as presented to the Finance and Operations Committee on July 17, 2018. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
And this is Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes. So we have eight yes and zero no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay.
There are still two more items from the Finance and Operations Committee. One is a recommendation to approve the Title I lease at First Church for the Title I preschool in the amount of $47,072 for the period 9/118 through 8/3119. Does anyone have any questions on that? Ms. Raymond?
This is the location where it has been, correct? This is not new?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it's the First Church, and we've been there for at least 10, 12 years.
Yes.
Concord Street.
Yes.
I could entertain a motion to approve?
I move to approve the contract with the First Church, I'm sorry, the lease at the First Church for the Title I preschool in the amount of $47,072.
For the period of nine?
For the period of 9/118 through 8/3119.
A second.
That's 48, just, you said 47, I believe, 48,072.
Oh, there's a typo. 48.
Okay. 48,072.
Friendly amendment. 48,072.
Okay.
Okay. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes. So we have eight yes and zero no. The motion passes.
Okay, and the final item is a recommendation to approve the June fiscal 2018 transfer report as presented. If there are any questions on this, please, if anybody has any questions, Mr. Kaufman? Thank you. Indirect question, and perhaps after we vote, Mr. Donovan can give us an update on end of year. I know we were dealing with $100,000. I'm just curious how that landed, or?
Yeah, I'll have the detailed update Wednesday night.
Okay.
For the, but the reality is, we're probably going to have to dip into the reserves to cover this year.
And, okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? I can entertain a motion to approve the transfer report, June fiscal 2018.
Voted.
Voted.
Mr.?
Ms. Mosher, a second.
Okay, on the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes. That's eight yes and zero no. The motion passes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Committee on Policy, and that would be Ms. Raymond?
Yes, thank you. As has been our custom, we've been very busy over at the Policy Committee, updating some things and getting us into compliance, I hope. So first on the agenda is Policy GBK, Employee Complaints and Grievances. If you recall, this policy was presented to the main board back in June. We had some discussion and some wordsmithing, and we sent it back to Policy. The main difference is, is we took the suggested language from the board. I believe it was Mrs. Van Twyver who came up with the nice succinct line and incorporated that, and that's the only change. So I'd like to move to approve Policy GBK, Employee Complaints and Grievances, as presented.
Is there any discussion on this? Mr. Kaufman? Thank you. Thank you. This policy refers to a procedure which is not attached to this, is that the board develops policies, the administration develops procedures, and that's in our policies. That's just the way it's said to work. So I would recommend if there's going to be a subsequent procedure that travels with this policy, that they be dealt with at the same time, if possible. And then I do have two suggestions for word changes, if I may. In the first sentence, well-defined grievance, I think a grievance procedure is really, these are employee complaints, so grievances are usually within the union contracts and covered there. I was going to recommend we did not need that word grievance, that it could be struck, struck, excuse me. So a well-defined procedure for the resolution of, and instead of problems, I would argue the word complaints, since complaints are in the title. Problems are, to me, kind of trivial. They really don't get a lot of attention. A complaint has been elevated, it's part of the title. So the two changes I would suggest the board consider, to strike the word grievance, because it's in the context of the entire document, and the next sentence specifically refers to grievances, and then to change the word problems to complaints to be more precise and consistent with the title of the document. And also to hold this policy until the procedure is defined, but that's a separate thing. Is there any other discussion? Any other comments or questions? Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that we go ahead and approve GBK as stated by this particular education policy that was presented today, without those changes that Mr. Kaufman just said.
Well, we have a motion on the floor to do that already.
All right, then we need to go ahead and vote.
Is there any, is there any other discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Mr. Kaufman. I'm sorry. Ms. Van Twyver?
Yeah, thank you. I was just trying to find out the spot, because Mr. Kaufman reminded me about the procedure approved by the board, whether that is a procedure that the board is going to develop, or whether it's a procedure that the administration is going to do. So I think that needs to be clarified. I didn't catch that the last time.
So when I read this, I read it as the procedures that we have are defined in the contracts and then in the unif- contracts and then in the unaffiliated handbook, there's a whole, like, listing of how those things are handled.
Yeah, but that, that needs to be specified here, then, because we do have procedures that are attached to some of our policies.
We do, and I, I think, as I was?
Be clarified, who's doing the, who's developing that?
So as I was researching this, I didn't come across any districts that had any attachments to this policy, there were no GBKRs that I was able to find. So, so I imagine that the reason for that is because there's some fluidity in the process for handling these things, depending on what's going on, and depending on what contract you're, you're under. So, you know, I, I take your point, I just don't know, I don't know, I would need a little bit more information, I think, from admin.
Mr. Kaufman?
I'm, I'm just looking at the verbiage that you have, your very first few words. "The district will establish an orderly, well-defined grievance procedure." So, to Ms. Van Twyver's point, I think here it states, the district, meaning the administration, will establish it, and, but this is sort of a contradiction to what I think Ms. Raymond just said, in that when you did your research, you didn't find a procedure in similar ones. So, I'm just looking at the language which you gave us. So it's calling for a procedure, it says the district's going to establish it, so I'm asking, and Ms. Van Twyver is looking for clarification as well.
So, are we ready for the vote on the motion? Is there any other discussion?
Well, I think there's, excuse me?
You have the floor, you already talked about it, okay?
Seems to be some confusion in terms of the language, and I think you're forcing a vote.
We've, we've already discussed it, we've had it in committee, so. Is the board ready for the vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, please take the roll call.
You ready?
Yes.
All right, on the recommendation to approve Policy GBK, Employee Complaints and Grievances as presented, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
No.
Did she say yes?
No, she said no.
She said? No.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's hard to understand. Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes, so that is one, two, three, four, five yes, two, three no.
Motion carries. Moving on.
The next policy is KEB, Public Complaints About School Personnel. This is one regarding the public having complaints about school personnel. We did have some questions about this in the past, I brought it down to a corporation council, and we discussed it. This one does have a KEBR that goes along with it, because there were two kind of issues that came up with this one. The first is, if someone has a complaint and they aren't satisfied, having gone kind of through the chain to the superintendent, and they're still unsatisfied, we needed a way to have them have, you know, a hearing about that. So if they're still unsatisfied, the district has always had a policy regarding hearings, and we felt it was important to continue to have that policy. So that's, KEBR is simply a renumbering of our existing policy. So, at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Policy KEB, Public Complaints About School Personnel, and that we rename Policy 1220 to Policy KEBR, Hearings, and there's a small amendment in the last line regarding the right of people to have witnesses and counsel if they do in fact ask for a hearing.
Is there a second?
Can I have some, just a clarification, please?
Sure.
I don't know this, but do we have hearings for public people? Is it a hearing? Can someone in district tell us?
Yes, yes, this has happened several times over the last few years, I actually looked it up, because I was curious. So if, for example, a parent or a community member is unsatisfied with the response they get, all the way up to the superintendent, and then they still feel that they haven't been treated fairly, or they simply disagree, they have the right to petition us for a hearing, and then we would put it to a vote, whether we would have that hearing. And I, I think there were at least two or three within the last five years, I'm trying to, to remember how many. But, so, it happens, I think it should continue to happen, and when we were updating policies, this KEB is pretty standard, I found at least seven other districts that have it, almost verbatim, but our 1220, which I'd like to label KEBR, is pretty unique to our district, but I think it's important, and I don't want to lose it, so.
Okay, I'm going to second that motion. Mr. Kauf, is there a discussion, Mr. Kaufman?
Discussion, yes, thank you. So I have a question, there may be a situation at some point in time in the future, this proposal, I guess, the KE, KEB is the first part, and KBR is the hearings, is that the intent, the hearing is the procedure to resolve, is that how you're presenting it?
Yes, should, should a person be unsatisfied with the superintendent? Our expectation is that the board is not resolving every issue that comes up in the district, that we have, you know, highly qualified administrative staff, it should start with, you know, the principal, and then move upward, and we should, we should only be hearing the stuff that still isn't resolved. So if the superintendent reports to us that something is resolved, that's fine. If a parent or a community member says, "I'm not happy with this resolution," then I think we need the KEBR to satisfy their right to have a hearing in front of us.
So, I, I think I agree with you, so the, so if, if the administration, all the way up to the superintendent makes a ruling, and a parent says, "No, I disagree with that," this hearing mechanism is the procedure that they would follow to bring something to the board, and as you said, we would vote on it to see if we would hear it or not, but, okay. Now, relative to the R section, and I agree with the text that you have, do we need, I think there should be some consideration, the person requesting the hearing has the option of the hearing being closed or open to the public, that has been the case in the past, where people who have requested a hearing before the board had an option, if it would be closed or open, I think that should be retained, it's current practice. And another question I have for clarification, who is entitled to request a hearing before the board? Because it says persons. So, but, it's not in the context of a grievance, right? Because grievance has its own set of procedures, so it would be a non-employee?
This would be a public person.
Or a non, it's a public, okay.
Public person, because, so what, in the past, we had this one policy, and it didn't cover what an employee should do, or how, you know, a parent should react. This, this covers any public person. If you're an employee, you need to follow the employee policy, but if you are any person in the public, so it doesn't necessarily have to be a parent, it could be, you know, a person off the street who, you know, had some dealing with the school district, and who was unsatisfied, you know, with the resolution. I, I'm trying to think of an example, and I'm not really coming up with one, but theoretically, it could happen, that someone wanted some documentation under Right to Know, or, you know, and felt like they were treated rudely or disrespectfully, I don't know, you know, that person would have a right to have a hearing. They've always had that right under our policies, and I want to make sure that continues.
Ms. Van Twyver was, was next, she had her hand up, I believe.
Yes, the motion is to approve both of these at the same time?
I'd like to do that, unless anyone has an objection.
I have no objection.
No objection.
I just want to make that clear.
Ms. Ho Hensy, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, but I, I would recommend that you divide the question, since you've got changes that recommended to KEB-R.
I didn't hear what you said.
She's recommended we divide the question.
Okay, Ms.
I still have a comment.
Ms., Mr. Mo, I just want to check with Mr. Mosher, because I haven't heard from him. Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments or questions?
I think we should just pass it as is.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go, go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
So thank you, Ms. Raymond, for your explanation, it's been very helpful for me to understand the intent of what you're trying to accomplish, and I absolutely support what you're trying to do here. So for the clarification, and you gave us a substantial explanation as to who might be taking advantage of this particular policy, and I would like to suggest that we include any public person as the first two words of this, so it's quite clear, because employees, as we said, they have grievance, they have their own set of rules, but a hearing request to the board by a member of the public, I think we could do some clarification here to improve your intent. And I guess you spoke to the different set of circumstances, and I guess that, I would ask, I would move to amend the proposal to include any public, any member of the public as the first three words, four words.
Second.
Okay, so.
Five words, sorry.
So we're going to replace the word persons with any member of the public? Is that, is that?
That's fine, yes, that's, that's my intent, yes, that would work for me.
Okay.
Under KEBR.
Under K, KEBR, okay, under KEBR.
Doris, we can still hear some background noise.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that amendment?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm just curious, so, so I'm clear, so, anyone can request a hearing on anything without even a process? So for instance, if there's a parent that has a disagreement, and doesn't agree with something that happens at this high school, that they can go right to the board, and without following a process and present a case?
No. No. No, we would refer them back to KEB that says, you have to go, if they complain to the board, or the board to the whole, it shall be referred to the school administration for study and possible solutions. So that's, that's the, our policy is that, you, anybody can talk to any one of us at any time, we're, we're out there, you know what I mean? But should we receive a complaint, a public complaint here at a board meeting, or someone emails us, what we do with that is we send it to the, we send it to you, frankly.
Okay.
To give it to the appropriate individual to solve it, and then you can come back and tell us. If after that process has completed, they're still not happy, then they can petition us for a hearing, and we, as a board, will vote on whether or not we will have a hearing.
So they would petition?
Chances are likely, but, you know.
No, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, that's okay.
So I just want to be clear, they would, so any time a complaint kind of works its way through, we've had a couple of them come up a little bit, and in this case, it would, they would, they would have to make a statement as to the resolution that I propose, or whatever I propose, isn't something that they're satisfied with.
Yes.
So in other words, you know, system principle makes a decision, that the parent or the person doesn't like that, and then it would work its way all the way up to my level, and then I would come up with a resolution, and then they could make the appeal to the board, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Kaufman?
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, I, I do have a question, and thank you for your clarification again. I do have a next-to-last sentence, you added that sentence in blue, the previous sentence, to me, really is sort of contradictory in my mind. It says, "Persons at hearings shall not comment on any matters before the board, nor address the board unless they are invited to do so." Now, given the process that created the hearing, as you just described, they would have, the administration would have made a ruling, they disagree, they apply to the board, "Can I come talk to you?" The board says, "Yes." So by granting the hearing, is that not permission to address the board? Is it, to me, this sentence telling them, gee, we just invited you to come and tell us what your problem is, but you can't speak before us? To me, that's kind of contradictory to the whole purpose of granting a hearing, if you tell them to come, and then you tell them they can't speak.
Yep, that's specifically, like, they, first of all, the people asking for the hearing, if the hearing is granted, they have a right to present their side, and they have a right for witnesses and counsel if they so choose, at their own expense. But, but what, what this says is that other persons at the hearing, so if the person who has the hearing brings their, you know, family, and their, there's audience members, those people can't be just up and speaking, they need to wait until they are called upon.
So those are more like observers?
Observers.
So.
Insoluble individuals.
So, if I may continue.
Well, I think we're getting off track here, because we have.
Actually, no, we're not, Mr. Chairman, this is a discussion, and I have the floor. I have the floor.
I want to say something, okay? We have an amendment, okay, that says, "Any member of the public," instead of persons, and we should be focusing on that, because what you're doing now is you're rewriting this, this entire thing, and we do that in committee. So you're, you're kind of going off on a tangent here, and it's, it's not relevant to the, to the matters that are before the board. The matter before the board right now is, we have two motions, one motion is to accept this, and the other one is to amend this, this, this. So I want to focus on that amendment, and I'd like to bring it, if, if the board is ready, I would like to bring that amendment to a vote, where we replace persons with any member of the public, and I, I for one think it's fine just saying persons, I don't think we need to say any member of the public, because if a, if a person has a, has a complaint, they go to Public Complaints About School Personnel, so they're going to go to KEB, then they're going to go to KEBR. So I don't think we need any member of the public instead of persons, I think it's fine the way it is. So what I'd like to do is focus on, on the, on the motion, which is before the board, and I'd like to focus on the amendment to, to our KEBR. So, is there any discussion on the amendment to replace persons with any member of the public? Does anyone have any more comments on that particular? Go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Guarino, I think the policy is fine as is, and we should vote on it. We should not be rewriting a policy in the, in the, in the HR board meeting, we do that in committee, and we should do that in committee, we, we got what we got, and we should vote on it, and the motion is out there.
Can I comment?
Go ahead, Mr. Mosher.
I agree with, with you and with Ms. Timmons, as that we like it the way it is, I reviewed it thoroughly, and I see no problem with it, and I think we should vote on it just exactly the way it is.
Thank you.
So if the, if the board is ready to vote on the amendment, the amendment replaces persons with any member of the public, is that comment on that, on the amendment, Mr.
I was going to call the question, which is to aid you in bringing forward the vote.
Okay, we, we don't have to vote to vote, we can just vote. So, on the amendment, to replace persons with any member of the public, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Yes?
Do you, do you want to amend it, or do you want it as is, Mr. Mosher?
As is.
Okay, so Mr. Mosher would be a no.
No, he didn't vote no, he voted yes.
But he, he.
We know what Mr. Mosher wants, he want, he does not want it amended. Do you want it amended, Mr. Mosher?
No, I don't, I want it as is.
Okay.
Did you hear me the first time?
Vote no.
Okay, thank you, sir. He, he did, he said no, he does not want it amended.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, for the amendment.
Okay.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
And Ms. Porter votes, uh, no. All right, so that's one, two, three, four, five, yes, and one, two, three, no.
Four.
I think you're on it.
Four, one, two, three, four, sorry.
So the motion fails.
The motion fails, okay, so, so we are voting on, on this.
Point of order, we still have discussion?
Okay, let me clarify, let me clarify what we're voting on, what's on, what's before the board right now. We, we have this policy, KEBR, and we're going to, that's on the floor right now, and we've replaced the first, the first word. now, and we've replaced the first, the first word, persons, with any member of the public?
No.
No, we did not, we voted against that.
Oh, we voted against it, I'm sorry, that failed, the amendment failed, okay. So, what we have, what we have on the floor right now is persons, we have, we have the, we have the, uh, K E B R as it was, okay. And that's what, that's the motion on the floor right now.
Both of them at the same time.
And we're going to be voting on K E B R and.
Hohensie asked to split the question.
Okay.
So, that was made by a member of the board, so, and there's further discussion on the proposal before the floor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this, is this something that you've, you've said before?
No, it's not. It's something I started to say, but I was interrupted by you when I had the floor. So, I'd like to move to amend this as currently presented before the board, to strike, "Persons at hearings shall not comment on matters, any matters before the board nor address the board unless they are invited to do so." I'd appreciate a second.
Second.
Okay. So, you want to strike that sentence?
Yes.
Okay.
Or you could amend it. Where I was trying to go with Ms. Raymond for clarification, which was my intent purpose, but since I realize I have to do it through amendment and not a friendly discussion, you forced me to do it this way, thank you.
For, for clarity, was the second from Mrs. Hohensie?
Mrs. Hohensie seconded it, the amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting kind of confused now, I, I thought we were just going to vote on the policy as presented, now we have, um.
We have an amendment to K E B R, which is to strike out the, the.
Both K E B and K E B R.
Oh, just K E B R.
Yes, as stated, as given to us, not amended, I thought we, that failed, and we were just going to vote on the policy itself.
He just amended a different sentence, so.
Right, you amended a different sentence.
Okay.
So, for clarity, where we are is we're not voting on them yet, we're just voting on the amendment on K E B R to strike the sentence about, um, "Persons at hearings shall not comment," et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so, is there any discussion on the amendment?
No.
Is the board ready to vote on the amendment to, to amend K E B R?
Okay. All right, on the motion to strike the sentence, Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
And Mrs. Porter votes no. So, that is one, two, three, four, five, yes, and one, two, three, four. Is that right?
The amendment fails, correct?
Wait a second, wait, yes, is one, two, three, four, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, the amendment fails.
Four, five.
Okay, so, we have before the board right now a motion to accept K E B R and K E B as presented by Ms. Raymond. Point of order. So, what's the point of order?
Ms. Hohensie had previously requested to split the question, divide the question, which would be to separate and vote separately on the two proposals, rather than, uh, treat them as one.
At this point, we've, we've done a couple amendments, is.
There are no amendments to this.
No, there's no reason.
Right, no, that's what I mean, we've discussed it at length, is, is there benefit to us to split it at this point, or shall we just move on?
That was not.
Doris, would you care to respond to that?
I made a motion to split the question, but it wasn't seconded and voted on.
Yes, it was seconded.
Still combined.
All right.
It was seconded.
What, what is the, what is the, um.
Did we, it wasn't voted on?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't hear the second.
What is the?
I seconded it.
What, what is the pleasure of the board? Do we want to vote, do we want to vote on these and move on?
Going on and then move on.
No, if.
There's a motion on the floor, sir, that we divide that, that's what we have to vote on right now.
Right, I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize, I did not hear Mr. Kaufman second it, um, so.
Okay.
Since she made the motion to divide them, and Mr. Kaufman seconded it, we need to vote.
All right, well, why don't we vote on that?
Okay.
Okay, well, go ahead, take the roll on splitting the motion, on splitting the, yeah, splitting the motion.
Comment before we do that, quick comment?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Make a quick comment.
Sure, go ahead, ma'am.
Typically, we don't do both mo- both, um, policies in the same motion.
Yeah, I.
Typical, so, in the future, you know, take them separately, and then we won't have this problem.
Yes, I, I foolishly thought it would be.
Easier.
Yes, more, more efficient.
You said it foolishly, not me.
Take the roll, please.
Okay, on the question to divide, uh, Mr. Mosher?
Oh.
No, okay, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
And Mrs. Porter votes no. So, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, no. And one, two, yes.
Okay, so.
Adam, Mr. President?
Go ahead, Ms. Van Twyver.
Move the previous question.
Thank you.
So, why don't we just vote on it, rather than vote to vote on it?
That's, well.
Okay.
I'm forcing you to do that.
Okay.
Moving the previous question.
Okay.
Okay, the motion.
And vote on it.
Okay.
The motion is to approve policy K E B, public complaints about school personnel as presented, and to rename, rename 1220 to K E B R.
Madam?
She's, she's, um.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Pro tem, you have to vote on the motion to end discussion.
Right, I was, I was going to say that.
We have to vote on it.
Yes, yes, so, this, this vote we're taking now is to end discussion.
And take it immediately.
And then vote, and then vote on the, uh, on the motion, okay.
Okay. Running out of room here, all right. Mr. Mosher?
Now, we're voting to end.
To end the discussion?
End the discussion, and, right.
I vote yes, so, end the discussion.
Okay, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes, we have eight yes, zero no, okay. All right. Now, are we voting, okay? On the recommendation to approve policy K E B, public complaints about school personnel as presented, and rename 1220 to K E B R, all right, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, this is, okay, Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes, so, we have, I believe, seven yes and one no?
Six yes, six no's.
Six yes, I'm sorry.
Six and two.
Okay, six and two.
Passes.
Okay.
Okay, so, we are going to move on to.
I'm not done.
Uh, Ms. Raymond's, rescind policy 1220.
Yes, I move to rescind policy 1220, as we have now renamed it, this is.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? No dis- seeing no, hearing no discussion, I believe the board is ready for the vote?
Okay, all right, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes, yay, okay, eight yes and zero no.
Okay. I move to rescind policy 1230 complaints.
On the motion, is there any, uh, discussion?
Do we have a second?
I did.
Second.
Okay, so, just for clarity, um, we have replaced this policy, this is a older policy, with all of those complaint policies that we have talked about endlessly, so, instead of one that kind of covers it, now we have individualized.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The motion is to rescind policy 1230 complaints, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes, right, eight yes and zero no.
Okay. Uh, the next item I have is policy I L D, which is noneducational questionnaires, surveys, and research. And, um, this was brought to our attention that our, um, previous iteration of policy I L D was no longer in compliance with state law. RSA 186 11 9D was updated, actually, in 2017, and so, we have made some changes to, um, bring in this policy into compliance with the law. The red is language taken directly from the law, that, those would be the changes. So, I move to accept policy, I'm sorry, I move to approve policy I L D, noneducational questionnaires, surveys, and research as amended.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Uh, I'll just do it via motions, uh, would like to suggest move, uh, in the one, two, three, four, third paragraph from the original document, where it talks about the surveys, questionnaire, or the documents will be available at the school and on the school district's website, uh, so that parents and guardians can review the survey or questionnaire prior to it being administered. Since the previous paragraph references 10 days, that says that the parents and guardians will be notified at least 10 days prior, I would offer, move to amend the third paragraph and insert the words, "10 days." I'm just trying, um, want the correct place here. Oh, insert the word, "10 days after," 10 days prior, after the word, "website." So, it would read, "The surveys, questionnaire, or other documents will be available at the school and on the school district's websites 10 days prior," so that the parents and, and/or guardians can review the survey or questionnaire pri- prior to it being administered. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, forgive me. 10 days belongs before the words "prior," I'm sorry.
Question, uh.
I'm sp- I'm sorry, I have the floor.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I'm sorry, the word, "10 days" to be inserted before the word "prior," if I can just clarify my language. This would provide consistency with the previous paragraph, the requirements of the state law, and be very clear that this is the mechanism how student, uh, parents will be notified. So, move to amend the third paragraph, insert the word, "10 days" before the word "prior." If I can have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on this amendment? Ms. Timmons?
I think that is unnecessary, because it said in the second paragraph, "Parents or guardians will be notified at least 10 days prior to the district administering a non-academic and noneducational survey to students." So, to put it again, it's redundant, and I think it's okay the way it is. Um, we can't label our parents or students dumb, they're not, they can read the first paragraph and to assume that, um, they mean 10 days. I think it's redundant to put it in again, and I think this policy right here is okay as it stands.
Comment?
Go ahead, Mr. Mosher.
Yeah, uh, as I believe that, uh, you're changing the wording, uh, in the law, and that is, uh, not, uh, not, not, uh, according to the rules. If, uh, it's said, uh, in the policy, uh, according to the, uh, the change that was required by law, it has to remain the same.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
I'd like to ask the policy chair, is this paragraph specified?
No.
I think it, the first one says that parents will be notified, but the second one says that that has to be posted on the website.
Yep, so.
Within 10 days, so I have no problem with that.
Yep, so, the 10 days has always been our policy, um, there's no mention of, oh, I'm sorry, it does say at least 10 days. So, um, the school, the, the law says specifically, "The school district shall make surveys or questionnaire, questionnaires available at the school and on the school district's website for review by the student's parent or legal guardian, um, at least 10 days prior to distribution to students," so.
So, it's clear. You're in favor of adding those words, 10 days?
I have no opinion on this whatsoever, I don't think, I don't think it changes the interpretation of the policy one way or the other.
One says that you'll notify the teachers, uh, one says that.
One says we'll notify them at least 10 days, and then the immediate subsequent paragraph says, "And they'll be on the website." So, for me, reading that, if I notify you that it's going to be there, the day that I notify you that it's going to happen, you need to have access to it. But, so, I, at this point, I don't care if we add 10 days or not, like, I'm completely neutral on it.
What I'm saying is that you can notify the parents in, in another way, by telephone call, by paper, whatever, but the second paragraph, the one that Mr. Kaufman is trying to say, is that it has to be posted on the website 10 days, which is different.
Okay.
So, I, I'm going to vote for the amendment.
Right, and I, as I said, I just read the, the law, and the law says it has to be posted, um, at least 10 days prior.
Posted?
But you said on the website, didn't you?
Did it, did it say on the web?
It says, "At school, uh, and on," no, "Available at the school and on the website at least 10 days prior."
That's what the law says?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, you do need to have it, those words in there, if the law says you got to post it 10 days.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on, on the amendment to add 10 days to the, uh, paragraph three? Okay, I think we're ready, the board looks like it's ready to vote on the amendment. Uh, can you please take the roll?
Okay, on the amendment, Mr. Mosher?
I like the, uh, policy just the way it's written, but, uh.
Yes or no, Mr.?
So, I'll say, uh, no to the amendment.
A no, okay, thank you. Mr. Kaufman? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
Mrs. Porter votes yes. So that is one, two, three, four, five, yes. One, two, three, no.
Passes.
Passes. Motion passes.
Motion carries. To amend the third paragraph. Okay, so we have on the floor right now the motion to accept.
Further discussion, Mr. Guarino?
Excuse me, you're out of order.
Sitting here with my hand.
I can see you. I can see you.
One wrack to the gavel is enough.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The next paragraph, the original text, red. I'm just, I just want to make a suggestion on just making the language a little simpler and perhaps easier to understand. The second sentence reads, "Parents and/or guardians may opt out their child from the youth district behavior survey and must opt out either by notifying the district in writing or electronically." I would like to suggest some clarification text where parents and guardians may optionally opt out their child. And then you could strike the words "and must out either." And everything else remains the same.
Ms. Timmons?
I do have some problems here. This is not a committee meeting. This should have been discussed and committee. And this way, this policy committee would have made those corrections or suggestions. And we get to a full board meeting and act like it's a policy meeting. It is not a policy meeting. And I didn't come here to do policy. I came here to approve things that was already done in committee.
Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Go ahead, Ms. Van Twyver.
I'd like to recommend, make a recommendation that people do attend the policy meeting if they're going to make big changes. If they want big changes, two or three or more, that they move to have the policy returned to the policy committee and then attend the meeting there to make it. Ms. Timmons is right. This is not to be a policy meeting. And changes that are more than one or two need to go back to policy.
Thank you. Okay, so we.
Back to policy in the committee.
Thank you. Thank you. So right now on the floor, we have a motion to approve ILD. Is the, is the board ready for the vote? Okay, so go ahead, take the roll to approve this motion with the amendment, "Ten days on the third paragraph."
Okay, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes. Okay, so we have eight yes and zero no.
Motion carries. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. And the last item tonight is another legal change. It's Policy IGE, Parental Objections to Specific Course Material. It's another change to RSA 186119C. The red language is the addition. And we brought that directly from the law language. No changes there. It's verbatim.
Would you?
So I move to accept IGE, Parental Objections to Specific Course Material as amended.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. My concern is about, I understand the law requires this change, and certainly we need to include it. My concern is that this is, this is not the only material a parent can object to. And the way this is written and presented, with this red text, the amended text from the state law being the very first and only specification of parental objection. And this has to do with two weeks' notice of instruction for human sexuality. There are other things that a parent may find objectionable. And there, to me, as I read this policy, I don't see any provision for, it just looks as though if you have this objection, this policy applies to this thing. I don't sense that a parent has other subjects that they can work with a teacher on changing the materials. And I don't see that reflected in this policy.
Thank you. The title of this policy is Parental Objections to Specific Course Material.
Can I make a comment, please? May I make a comment, please?
Yes, can you, can you please wait until I finish my sentence? And I will let you speak. Okay? The, the title of this policy is Parental Objections to Specific Course Material. Any person reading that, it doesn't say sexual. It says specific course material. So I think there's a tip-off right there as to what this policy is in regards to, that it's not specific to that second sentence. Go ahead, Ms. Hohensie.
I move that we add two words to the third paragraph. In the event that a parent or guardian finds any other, those are the two words, any other specific course material objectionable. That way, they understand these are two separate things. Otherwise, it is very confusing. And I think the administration will have a lot of questions to answer to try to clarify this. I think the board would support clarity.
Second. How about, okay, thank you. Ms., I think Dr. Mosley had his hand up. But before that, I just want to say something to Ms. Hohensie. How about, instead of saying "any other," just find, just say, "In the event a parent, guardian finds any specific course material objectionable," rather than say "any other." I think that's, that's the same thing.
I don't think that would solve the problem. Because this is, this, the top red text is giving parents the option to, you know, to see the material and to review sexual material. This is any other material. There's a different procedure. There are two different procedures in the same statute.
I don't see, I don't see the need for the word "other." But did you have a comment, Dr. Mosley?
I just wanted to reiterate what Ms. Timmons said around the purpose of these policies coming to the board. It's for review and for vote. There was a comment made that the administration would have some issues around interpreting this, interpreting this policy. In fact, if we had issues, we've already broached those and addressed those issues in the policy committee meeting. So as far as I speak for all three of us, there's no ambiguity in terms of interpretation or the intent of this policy. So we're all set on that.
Did you have a comment, Ms. Raymond? I thought your hand was up.
I was just going to point out that this exact discussion happened at the policy committee meeting. And the policy committee voted as a whole to send it over without that change.
Okay.
So I will be voting against the amendment.
May I make a comment, please?
Sure, go ahead.
May I make a comment? I was at the committee, and I'm still entitled as a board member to make the same motion at the full board.
Okay, and you've done that. Okay, so.
It's been seconded, and it needs to be voted on.
You were seconded.
I did.
Okay, we have it. Ms. Van Twyver?
I'd also like to remind this board that we write policies for all administrators, not just this one. Okay? So if it's, if somebody else feels that it's not quite clear, then I think we ought to address that. But probably should go back to policy to do that.
Okay.
I have comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Mosher.
You know, I've looked at this here, and we've been through this several years ago. The only thing that has been changed or added was the part that's in red. But if you read the third paragraph, it says, "In the event that parent or guardian finds specific course material objectionable, the parent or guardian may notify the building principal of the specific material to which they object and request that the student receive alternative instruction." Now, that, that was a lot of ground because it's not necessarily on reproduction or the sex education or anything like that. That was added as recently. The part that we went through and went round and round about with this, I believe it was about five or six years ago, was that the other parts that may be objectionable was parents who, or guardians who, on religious grounds or other personal fronts, have found that the material may be objectionable or have some part of it that was objectionable and asked that the student be given alternative instruction. And that, we passed that very well, very easily, without having to go and do this harangue and rigmarole that we're doing now, which is unnecessary. Because if you read the policy, the, it says that they must agree to the alternative instruction. That's the key there. But the part that they find objectionable is multifaceted and not necessarily limited to what's in the red. So I think that we should take this policy, just pass it the way it is. This is not a committee meeting. This is a review of the policy. And let's get it over with and done because there's nothing here that's strange or outlandish. It's out that if they find any part of the instruction that's, or part of the course that's objectionable, they can complain and have it removed and have alternative instruction. So it's very simple and very clear. I mean, what do you have to have? Be a rocket scientist to read this?
Thank you.
May I withdraw my motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Excuse me, did you have a comment, Ms. Hohensie?
Well, she withdrew her.
I would like to withdraw my motion because I'm rereading the law. I think that it doesn't add the clarity that I wanted to add. I would like to withdraw it and move to move the red part to the bottom of the policy. It's just not clear the way it is. Oh.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hohensie. Mr. Kaufman?
So since I seconded Ms. Hohensie's motion, originally I would withdraw it. And I will second her motion to move the red paragraph. Where did you want to move it to, Doris? Just to the last statement, to the bottom?
At the last statement, but before, the name of the parent or guardian shall not be public information because that applies to both.
Okay.
So. We had this conversation at policy meeting as well. And the discussion was relating to the fact that if we move this, then the, the procedure by which a parent, you know, the procedure, it doesn't matter what kind of material a parent is objecting to. It's the same thing. They have to talk to the principal. The principal needs to discuss it. So, you know, logically, we talk about, here's one thing that the state law requires us to let you know two weeks in advance about human sexuality. And then the next thing is, any objectional stuff, including that, here's what you do. That's, to me, moving it around is not, I just, I find this very frustrating.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Ms. Timmons?
I agree with Ms. Raymond. We should leave that red paragraph as is. We went through this in policy. It's there. We need to vote on it and move on. Moving it down to the bottom does not make sense to me. So leaving it there, it makes clear sense to me that way. Then have to look down the bottom to see where this sentence should be at the top. I just, I agree with Ms. Raymond. Leave it where it's at. She was there in policy. We should not get to the board meeting and then make those changes. We should leave it like it is.
Thank you. Okay, so on the amendment, are we ready to vote on the amendment to move paragraph two to become one, two, three, four, to the, after the fourth paragraph? Is that correct?
At the end.
The name of the parent.
Next to last paragraph. Before the word, the name of the parent.
Oh, to the next, okay. Okay. On the amendment, can you please take the roll?
Okay. Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
Mrs. Porter says no. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six no and two yes.
Thank you. Motion, the amendment fails. So right now, we have the parental objections to specific course material. A motion to approve it. Are we ready to vote on this motion?
Yes.
Okay. Can you please take the roll?
Yes. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes.
Motion carries.
Eight yes and zero no.
Okay, so thank you very much, Ms. Raymond, for all your hard work. I know it's a lot of work, and you put a lot of time into it. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We do not have a policy meeting this month, but we will meet again. I believe it's the third Tuesday in September.
Thank you. The Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation, that would be Ms. Van Twyver.
Oh, thank you. Our next meeting is on the 20th, is it? Yep, the 20th. The topic will be IREDA final year report. I see that Mr. Dr. McKinney is out of the building right here, out of the room. And also, teacher ease. I guess this is a new thing that's come down the pike. He'll be discussing that. And the questions that didn't get answered at the last meeting.
Thank you.
The agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Committee on Human Resources, that would be Ms. Timmons.
Okay, today we met. So I move to suspend the rules as a human committee. Didn't meet today about 5:30. I'd like to move to accept the recommendations for Ms. Tubby for Principal for New South Wales Elementary School with an annual salary $98,750.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Can we please, are we ready for the vote?
Okay, all right. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes. So that's eight yes and zero no.
Okay, also, we have personnel recommendation that would revise today, August 13, 2018. And I'd like to move to approve that.
Yes, second.
Okay, are we ready for the vote? Can you please take the roll call when you're ready?
Okay. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes. Eight yes and zero no.
Okay, the next board, the next Human Resources meeting will be a special one on August 27.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
I have a question for the chair. Could you give us an update on staffing? I couldn't make the meeting tonight. But how many open positions do we have? We're a week or two, two weeks from school opening. I'm just curious.
I don't have that number. So I will have to give you that information later. I don't have it right now.
I'd be more than.
Go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
If it's okay with the chair, I'd be more than happy to have Dana O'Garry email out that information just to give an update this week if that would be appropriate.
Sure, that sounds good.
She'll email out the entire board just to give the update.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, that's Committee on Human Resources. We're going to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Seeing none. We have unfinished business. And the first item on unfinished business would be the Strategic Planning Committee?
Yes, so.
Go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
Thank you. Couple of things. We have been meeting the strategic plan. So it's been my, Ms. Porter, Stacy and myself. And we've, despite the summer months, we've been meeting and plugging along. We would like to move forward with generating a survey for the public. The way that this works is that we're looking to partner with UNH. And if you will recall, UNH did our survey for our climate survey in the district. And so we have been in contact with them. It's going to cost approximately between $6,500 and, $6,500 to about $9,000 and some change. We'd like to give ourselves some leeway on that only because when you're putting a survey like this together for strategic planning, going out to the general public, we could get 80,000 respondents, or we could get 55,000 or 35,000. So that's why you see that range between 35,000 and 55,000 people. When I mean the survey's going out, it's going out to employees. It's going out to parents. It's going out to community members. So this is a pretty prodigious undertaking, excuse me. So a couple of things just to keep in mind. UNH would be more than happy to partner with us. They're willing to work with us and to start the process. But the caveat is that they're not going to start doing anything until there's some type of deposit that we make. So it's a good faith deposit. So we haven't done that yet, only because we just need the approval from the board. The other thing to this, too, is that because it's an open survey link, so once it's going to be available on our website, it's going to be available in our media. Just to keep in mind that tracking of the IP is not going to take place only because if someone goes to the library and wants to use that computer, that one person can go and use that computer. But if another person in the community wants to use that same computer community wants to use that same computer to participate in the survey, that person can also go on that, that same computer and link it. I mean, and, and participate in the survey. So, I just share that with you. I don't, I think people will be, will do the survey in good faith. We've used UNH before, they do good work, and they're certainly eager and willing to partner with us to start the process of developing some survey questions for our strategic plan for our, our community and for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Are you looking for a motion to approve the...
Yes.
The survey cost?
Yes. I need, I, in order to, to receive, to access the money through, through the school department, I do need board approval for this, as we did with the UNH survey as well.
Okay.
And I just use this range. It could be 65,000 and that, I mean, 65, $6,500 and that's it, or a little more, but I didn't, we didn't wanna keep coming back to the board and saying it's gonna be this cost, it's gonna be this cost. So, this range allows us some flexibility. So, that's why we asked for that, Ma.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
And after I make a motion, I'd like to speak to my motion.
Sure.
Move to approve the expenses for the UNH survey for the strategic plan in the amount of not to exceed $10,000, but I would like to know what line item it's gonna come from.
Second.
Mr. Donovan, can you answer that question first?
Well, it's not currently budgeted, so we would have to make a transfer. I don't know exactly where I'll take it from, but it would have to be taken from another line item.
So, that would make us 6,000 more in the hole?
No, this would be this year.
10,000?
It's next year.
Oh, it's next year. It should be this school year.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
If I may speak to my motion.
Go ahead.
Dr. Moser, I recommend that you speak to UNH. They've gotta have a way of when they may send out an email invitation, which is what this, this purpose process was described as. They should be able to provide some kind of unique identifier for that particular person that they would then use when they completed the survey. In that regard, it's much less likely that people will share those codes, and you wouldn't get the, people just going to an open link and, you know, skewing the survey. We saw what happened with the last survey that we did. We had more respondents than we had people, eligible people. So, if UNH can do it with a unique key, I'm in favor of that. If not, I would like to hear another approach, because we have to assure that people are voting just once. And beyond that, I think we need also to make provision for the people who don't have internet access. We're making the assumption that everybody has internet access, and I don't believe we can. And we have an outstanding issue that's been before the board before about a survey of what equipment do people have at home. That's another topic that I'll address. But we need to have some way of doing it hard copy or something. You can't just rely on email, in my opinion.
So, that's a valid point in the way that you said everyone's gonna get an email. So, if we're, we're a little different than the UNH survey, only because everyone in the district, we know their email account. So, it's the Nashua, you know, dot edu account. So, that makes it easier to just send that one survey out with the email. When we're asking for public feedback, we are, what I would say, not just soliciting feedback just through email. We're also soliciting feedback on websites. We're also soliciting feedback, you know, we're, we're looking to send the email out in our, our, our local newspaper. And so, people know exactly where they can, you know, click on the link or, or access the link without even clicking on it. You can see it in the paper. So, we're really looking to cast a pretty large net, larger than just a climate survey. So, that presents a challenge. So, if we had every single person's email in the community, and they sent us to it, then we could do that. But we don't have every single person's email in the entire community. So, that's why we have to go with the survey link by having people click on the link and access it there. We're looking, all, all we're trying to do, and I say try to do, it's never perfect, we are trying to get as much feedback in addition to doing all of these sessions with the small groups that, that we've already set up. This is yet another layer to reach out to people who can't attend our meetings that we're having with the focus groups. I appreciate that.
Dr. Mosley, when, when we did the other surveys, do we do all, have we done all of our surveys electronically, or do we have any other way of surveying, you know, 'cause our previous surveys, were they all electronic, basically?
They, they were electronic, yes. They, all of our previous surveys that we've done have been electronic. And my add, that doesn't necessarily mean that you need a computer. We, we found that most individuals have some type of electronic device that you can actually do the survey on as well. So, if you have a cellphone or some type of electronic device, we have an internet connection here at the school. We also have internet connection at the library as well.
So, so basically, we're, we're, we're looking to survey our stakeholders. And so, I, I, I would think, I'd like to make a comment about that. As Mr. Kaufman noted, that not all stakeholders have access to computers or electronic. So, I, I think maybe the, the plan, the Strategic Planning Committee could look at, you know, try to identify who the stakeholders are and, and, and other ways of identifying how, how we can get the survey to them, whether it's by paper, old fashioned, or, or, or some other way. That would be great.
So, the answer to your question, I'd be more than happy to explore that. We, I have a budget to, to engage in that discussion. I also wanted to add that we also are looking to have the survey translated as well, and to Spanish or some other languages as well, just to get that, that population or that feedback as well. We're, the, the goal is to go, you know, to explore and to get out and get as much feedback as we can from, I would, I say stakeholders, but I wanna just expand that and say, if you live in Nashua, you have an interest in the schools, whether you have, you know, kids who attend the schools or not, we want your feedback.
Great, that, that sounds good. Ms. Van Twyver?
I'd like to ask Mr. Donovan if he was around when we did the last, he's the only one that's been here, I think, when the last survey, the last plan was done. Did we do a survey at that time? And if we did, how did we do it?
Actually, when the last strategic plan was done, that was done right before I came here. I do not believe there was this sort of a broad, this is, I mean, if you're trying to get 50,000 people, my opinion, you'll never get in 50,000. That's crazy. You could offer free $10 bills and you wouldn't get 50,000 people. But, but that's fine if it, just to reach out. That, my understanding of the information that I got, it had just been completed when I came, and there was not a big giant electronic survey, no.
Well, I, I'm a little concerned about people stuffing the ballot box, but, you know, there's no way to control that without tracking the IPs. And like you said, people use the same, two people use the same computer, you know, you can't discredit them, but...
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
We're getting information in more than one way, so we're not relying 100% on the survey. If you look in your packet, there's a list of focus groups, which is quite extensive. We'll be gathering information from those people, and there's a highly qualified group of people who are serving on the Strategic Plan Committee. So, I think that we're gonna be looking for overall themes and things that come up from the group. So, I, you know, if we were relying only on a survey, I think that would maybe, maybe be something that we'd have to look at.
For our results, yes.
But we're taking a holistic view here and gathering information from, I think, a wide variety of sources. So, hopefully...
What's, what's to stop somebody that's on your special committees, I saw that long list of people, plus them doing it again when you do the public survey?
It would only re...
I mean, that could happen. But I, any way you can get the information, I just don't want people to be able to stuff the ballot box. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor right now. Is there any more discussion on the motion to approve the, the cost for the survey not to exceed $10,000? Could you please take, I think we're ready for the vote?
We are. Okay. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes. That's eight yes and zero no.
Motion carries. Next, on the agenda, is the Board of Education request list. Mr. Kaufman, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, it's been several months since we've seen the list, reviewed the list, made terminations, what recommendations need to get forwarded on to the administration. So, it's my way of bringing that list back to being discussed, so we can continue that. There's important things on that list. Mr. Mosher's access to a computer, for example. Ms. Raymond's discussion around school safety. So, there's things on there that need to be discussed that are relevant, and they've sat on the table on a list, and not even with, with, without a motion. I think it's disgraceful. And I'm asking, I put it on the list, I thought we would be discussing the list. So, the fact that it wasn't included in the packet is indicative of either Mrs. Oden or the administration not really wanting to discuss that list. And I ask that it be brought forward on the next agenda and discussed until, I don't know how many things are left, but we need to complete that. And until, you'll notice nothing's been added to that list, because no action's been taken on previous items. It was a very effective technique. Tell us what you'd like to do, add it to a list, do nothing to it for three months, and it effectively kills all communication around it. And it's awful behavior on the part of the administration and Mrs. Oden, and I'm really insisting that it be on the next agenda, as an item to be discussed, individual items to be resolved. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this? Go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
We got in the list that Mr. Kaufman, I think it's unfair for him to assume that Ms. Oden is just naive and not thinking that she wanted to put that on the list. You're not giving her the benefit of doubt or defending herself, and I think it's wrong for you to make that comment about her. She's not here to defend herself. So, I'm gonna defend her, I'm gonna defend her. You'd need to wait until she can give you some feedback on it. You don't need to blast her away.
Sorry. I'll be happy to blast her when she's in the room. Thank you.
You just wait till then, but that's wrong.
Ms. Van Twyver?
That's all it needs. Yes. When I was elected to this board, Barbara Presley, and many of you know her, said, "Ask a lot of questions. Doesn't do you any good if you ask a lot of questions and don't get an answer." So, I don't agree entirely with what Mr. Kaufman is complaining about, but I'm telling you, if you don't answer the questions that we ask, we're not doing our job as elected officials. So...
And it's not a job to blast other elected officials either. So, I just...
Timmons, I have the floor. You don't need to comment. When you have the floor, you may express your opinions during board comments.
Okay, I think we need to, is there any other comments? Does anyone else have any comments on this?
May I say something?
Go ahead, Ms. Hohensie.
May I move that we schedule in the near term that Mrs. Oden to be in a meeting to address these questions?
Second.
Can you repeat your motion, please?
I move that we set up a meeting to address these questions at the board president's discretion for scheduling.
I'll second the revised language.
Any discussion on, on the motion? Go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
I had asked Mrs. Oden to schedule a meeting about this before we, before the vacation, back in June, and she said we were going to have a meeting to do that in the first, second or third week of Ju, of July. And that was never scheduled. Here we are a month later, and we still haven't discussed it. So, my frustration comes out of promises unfulfilled, and I support this motion wholeheartedly.
Does anyone else have any comments on this motion?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Mosher.
It always say, puts a lot of, uh, the priorities that are on this list. However, in the day-to-day operation of the schools and the board, and with the, the other problems that occur, it's no, no doubt that Mrs. Oden did not have the opportunity to make that, make that meeting, uh, happen. I'm sure that Mr. Kaufman would be very happy to have a, an update on that and see when a, a meeting could be scheduled, considering that there are so many other things that occupy the board president's time, not only personally, but also in the carrying out of her official duties as a board president. So, I would look to allow her to have that little extra time to maneuver the schedule to, to please everyone. But sometimes, that's not always possible. So, I would say, remind her and see what can be done to schedule a meeting or a work session whenever it is reasonably possible.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I, I agree with Mr. Mosher that priorities, we have to look at our priorities. And we have a list of demands on administration for information. A lot of them come from one member, and I think it's a bit over the top. I think it's ridiculous. And the, the number of requests to inundate...
Point of order.
Administration.
It's not, it's not point of order.
Excuse me, I'm speaking on the motion. I'm speaking on the motion. Everyone else had a turn, and I waited my turn, and I'm speaking on the motion.
Point of information.
Okay? And I think that it's a bit ridiculous when you make a huge list of demands, and you haven't calculated the impact that these demands have on the efficiency of the administration. You haven't calculated the impact on our priorities of the board. It seems that the world does not revolve around the demands of one or two individuals on this board. We have to act as team members, and we have to look at how, how the administration, what, how we're impacting administration with these demands. So, I'm not gonna vote for this motion, because basically, it's redundant anyways, because scheduling a meeting at the president's discretion, she does that anyway, so it's really unnecessary. So, we have before us, and we have before us a motion to schedule a meeting to address this list at the board president's discretion. Is there any more discussion on the motion?
I asked for point of order.
Oh, go ahead.
I was offended when you mischaracterized one member for writing all these questions, when I know the questions were written by at least three members. And I think we have board ethics, that we don't attack board members in public. So, I take offense to that. I think the motion is open-ended. It gives discretion to the board president, and I'm hoping we just vote on it.
Thank you, Ms. Hohensie. And you should've spoken up when Mr., Mr. Kaufman decided to attack Dottie, who's not even here, to defend herself, with those very, with that very same explanation. But I, I said, "Most of them come from one person," is what I said. I didn't say they all did. And, and it's, and it's very, it's very, a very large list, is, and, and it needs to be justified. So, I think we're ready, are we ready to vote? Or we have more people? Go ahead.
Call the question.
Call the question, okay. So, we're gonna vote to end discussion. Would you take the roll, please?
Okay. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter votes yes. Okay, so, the motion carries. Okay.
So, now, we're gonna vote on the motion to, to request that Ms. Oden schedules a meeting to address these questions at the board president's discretion.
Okay, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
Mrs. Porter votes yes. Okay, so, we have one, two, three... Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six yes and two no.
Motion carries. So we're going to move on to new business and change of school assignment, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mosley.
Hi. This is a new policy, actually, that took place prior to my arrival. So let me just kind of give the backdrop to this a little bit. Anytime a parent can make a request to have his or her child attend a different school district, that is facilitated through the recommendation of the superintendent, either yea or nay, to the board, and then the board can decide whether it wants to support the request or my recommendation or not. And for confidentiality reasons, I'm not going to say the name, but in this case, there's a parent who works in a district. She would like to transport her own child to this district in which she works in. She's willing to pay for the complete cost of transportation, tuition for her own child to go to this particular district. I found no reason to deny the parent of her request. I explained to the parent, and Bob Chopper and I, that even though this board may say yes, it's okay to go and pursue this, that does not necessarily mean that the other district is obligated to say yes to accept the child. So in this case, a yes vote from this district would allow that facilitation of discussion to happen at the other district for this particular parent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Van Twyver?
I think we had this occasion in the past, and I believe that there has to be an agreement between the two superintendents or principals or whatever. And I think I would like to have that agreement made, that they're willing to accept it before we approve it.
We did this, we actually had a case last, actually, the beginning of last year...
This was before your time, sir.
Can I?
Before interrupting me, can we at least just listen to me? I'm not trying to be difficult in any way. I'm just here for this parent and for this child. This past year, at the high school, we did have a student come in and tuition in. I know that because I brought it to the board. That board was, it was a Hudson student. I was in communication with that superintendent. He facilitated that request to his board, and then I brought it to this board. Once I brought it to the board, I asked the board, because they had approved it in the neighborhood district in Hudson, if this child can come here. We did a probationary period for that child. This board did accept it, and we got some tuition money from, I believe it was Hudson School District. All we're asking is, please don't hold this up for this child and this family. Like, this is not something that I'm trying to prevent. This is a parent of a student in this district who is looking for my support from this community support so that they can better educate their child to another district that she's willing to pay for. Now, I think that allowing this parent to pursue this is completely appropriate. And to hold this up for a request, that is something that we've done before in the past. It's very difficult to get behind that. This is about a kid and moving forward, and there's no reason to object to something we've done before. Thank you.
I was...
Go ahead, Ms. Van Twyver.
I was not objecting to it, sir. I think I just heard you say that you went to Hudson and you guys agreed on it, and then you brought it to the board. That's all I'm asking. And I believe that's the way Mr. Conrad handled the situation when we had it before, that he went to the other one, other school district, and they said, "Yes, okay, we'll accept it." And then they brought it to the board, and we said yes. Now, that's all I'm asking.
Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
So my question is in the same kind of train of thought. If we approve this, and if she's willing to cover the cost herself, I don't frankly see any reason why not, can Salem say no at that point?
Yes.
Are they able to, is their district able to bring the question to their board without us approving it? Or do we have to approve it first, and then their board approves it? I don't know how that works.
Do you have the policy? Did you?
I read the policy, and the policy doesn't say...
They have the...
The policy doesn't say, like, this board approves it, and then that board approves it. But my assumption is that she would have to have permission from us before approaching the Salem district, yes?
Yes, that's exactly what we did for another situation, for a kid that was in a neighborhood district. They got all their ducks in order. They came to us, and they asked us if they would weaken tuition in this particular student, and we agreed. But Salem can't have that discussion with her until they get approval from this board. And I'll make, there's no reason not to allow this parent to go pursue this request based on she's willing to pay for the child's tuition, travel, all specialized instruction, and she's following the law. And what I'm saying is that we've done this before, except it's been on our end in terms of approving, and we did do that. And I don't see why we can't do that. Yes, you did it in front of Conrad. I understand that. But the law changed in 2016. That's why I'm doing it this way. We did it when I first started last year, and I'm asking to support this child and this parent to go pursue an education that the parent deems fit for her child.
Mr. Kaufman?
Totally in support of the request of the parent, okay? I don't think that's a question here. We're going to do the right thing for what the parent wants. That's the least we can do. In my mind, you know, until Ms. Van Twyver made her comment, her comment didn't make sense until what kicked in is, if we approve the child's departure and Salem does not accept the child for some reason, for whatever reason, it's still on to them to do that. I don't want that student to lose their spot here. That's what I'm thinking. We've released them at that point so they could go to any other school at that point, right? It's not just Salem. I don't know if it's only Salem. But if Salem, for some reason, declines, that child doesn't have a school lined up. And I would hate to see our decision preventing that student from coming back if they had to. That's the safeguard I'm concerned about. Am I, if a parent wants to take, they can take their child and school them at home if that's what they want to do. In this case, Salem, that's on the parent. I'm supportive of the parent.
I don't think the student is going to be without a school if we don't take them because they're transferring from Salem to here.
No.
They're not...
The other way.
I'm sorry, the other way around. I apologize.
So just...
Ms. Raymond and then Ms. Timmons. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons.
That's okay, go ahead.
So if hypothetically they say no, but I've just read the law that you included, the RSA 1933. And it does say that superintendents can't reach an agreement anymore. Like, that's, so it said they used to do, and now, as of 2015, the school board has to vote to approve it first. So it says, "The school board where the student resides must vote to allow the student to attend the different school, and then the school board where the student seeks to enroll must vote to allow them to enter." So that's what it says, so I think we should do that. Having said that, if the receiving district says no, are our enrollment numbers so high that we wouldn't be able to accommodate this child?
We can accommodate the child.
Okay.
The only thing that really is in jeopardy for the child and the parent is that if there's a situation where there's an over-enrollment in their neighborhood school, they would have to go to a different school. But there's plenty of room in the schools for this child, and, you know, over enrollment in this situation is not an issue. But I think the parent, it's middle of August, and I don't think it's right that we hold up this parent because we're getting into, well, you go to Salem, we don't even know when Salem's school board is until what? We don't know that question. It's indicative of us to arm this parent with the authority and the support of their local school board so that they can go and pursue an education for their child. I don't think that's an inappropriate piece to ask of this board. The second thing is that what happened with Conrad, when, three years ago, it's completely inconsistent with the new law that you see in front of you. The law requires the board to support or nod or deny the parent request to pursue an education in a different district.
So I'm, I'm sorry, can I finish?
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. The other question that I had was regarding the agreement with the parent regarding tuition costs and any potential special education costs. Is there a legal, like, form? Is there something that everybody needs to sign to make sure that that parent is assuming that cost and that that doesn't come back to cost us thousands of dollars that we weren't expecting?
Do you want me to answer the...
I don't know. Who would answer that?
Go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
So a couple of things. If a child requires, by law, we have to educate students in the least restrictive environment. So if that parent is willing to send that child, in this case, their child, to Salem, and there is a cost for that, then Salem will have to determine that when they accept the child or not. They always have the right to say no, but we don't know that. I don't know the child's needs, like, right off the bat, but certainly in the parent's correspondence that you could see that she was willing to pay for that. If there's an agreement, if the Salem School District decides to accept the child, then we enter into that agreement, and there can be some language around specialized instruction and transportation.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Ms. Timmons had her hand up, and then we'll go over there.
Okay, I did. I'm sorry, Ms. Van Twyver, I was waiting. I just think that we should move on this motion to accept the recommendation that we moved this child to Salem, as stated in the documents that we received on Friday. I support it. I think it's unnecessary to go through all this what-ifs. I think we should do this and get it over with. We have wasted a lot of time with what-ifs. So I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation to move this child to Salem. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Van... Ms. Van Twyver?
Dr. Mosley, it was never my intent to stop this, but I think a courtesy call to the Salem before you came to us with this, on their opinion and whether they might be interested or not, would have been helpful, and I would have been much more eager to vote for a yes if I understood that they were willing to do that. And I'm sure they probably will be willing to do that. But I apologize for not being informed that there was a state law change, because when I had the policy committee, that's the way we handled it. So I apologize for that.
Okay, that's fine. And Ms. Van...
Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
I don't know what the Salem School Board entity is going to say. That's for them to decide. They may, they'll get this packet, they'll get all of the information from us. They may request additional information from the district. We'll supply that if that's what they want. But I don't know all of the members, so that's a discussion they're just going to have. So it's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we have on the floor, we have a motion to approve the recommendation to allow change in school assignment. We ready for the, is the board ready for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, please take the vote.
Okay, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, and good luck to the student and the parent over in Salem.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes. That's eight yes and zero no.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Point of order?
Yes.
It's 9:05, so I'm going to move to extend the meeting to allow us to go through the rest of our agenda, because I think a couple of these things are timely as well. I hope not.
Extend it until it's done or extend it for 30 minutes?
The 30 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I think we can bang it out.
Yeah, we can bang it out. There's not much left.
Okay. On the motion to extend 30 minutes, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes. So we have seven yes and one no.
Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have calendar proposal from the Nashua Chamber of Commerce. Is there any discussion on this? Would you like to speak on this?
I can certainly speak to it, sure. We had Mrs. Hall from the Chamber of Commerce reach out to Madam President, Dottie Oden, and myself around some discussion around starting school after Labor Day. And so there was, you know, some, there was a presentation that was given to the Chamber of Commerce around the benefits of doing so, particularly around, you know, some tourist attractions, some lodging, some of the things that might be attractive to amusement parks, lakes. So there is, this is a, and I don't, I'm just kind of putting all of the information out there, and then people can make their own judgment. When you're starting school after Labor Day, keep in mind, and this is what I wrote down, we have collective bargain units with seven different units where contractually we have to pay and compensate people for 180 days. And there's also some, you know, we have hourly employees as well. So anytime we're dealing with so many different contracts in a city this large, starting school after Labor Day only pushes us back, only, it's only going to make us end school later than what we already have ended school. That being said, you start after Labor Day, and you factor in snow days, you're probably looking like in that last week of June, just right off the bat. So there are, kind of with that said a little bit, there's going to be a rationale in terms of what works well for our schools. And starting before Labor Day has been something that, you know, the district has practiced for quite some time, and certainly it's, the context of the correspondence from Miss Hall is to certainly for the board to have a discussion about that.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Mr. Kaufman?
I'm not willing to make any decision on this until all seven unions have weighed in. Other than that, I think we're wasting our time.
Good point. Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any comments or questions on this?
I would love to know, excuse me, I'd love to know what Mr. Marku thinks on this. Suspend the rules and allow a comment if we can.
We'll wait till there's public comments. Thank you.
May I make a comment, please?
Go ahead, Ms. Hoensie.
I absolutely will not support delaying the start of school after the past two days, two years with snow days and the acrimony that was over when we should extend or curtail our school year in the hot month of June. And we spent over a quarter of a million dollars this year and a half million dollars last year and let school out early. It's absolutely absurd to even consider it unless we have a separate plan for dealing with snow days, because right now, delaying it, the start, is only going to add to the problem we have in June.
Thank you very much. Ms. Porter?
And also, I am against determining the school's start date based on business considerations. I think that that's totally inappropriate. I don't even want to discuss educationally why this is about, I mean, I think that's a nonstarter right there, personally.
Thank you.
It's actually, you know, it's inappropriate.
I put in a historical fact.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Mosher.
Yeah, because, you know, I happen to be the senior person on the board right now, but I can go back to the end of the Second World War and relate the fact that at that time, at that time, the school did not start until after the... at that time, at that time, the school did not start until after the, the Labor Day weekend. So, I mean, it's funny that it comes up now, that somebody wants to bring it back, and I'm not in favor of it, but as a historical fact, we did, we did just that up until about 1946 or '47.
Thank you, Ms., yep, go ahead.
If the writer was here, he had something to say about that also, but it's just a matter of, you know, when, if you're there and you remember it, 'cause I can remember, you know, going away for the, the long weekend, up to spend the time on the farm, and that was always over the Labor Day weekend.
He's gonna be off the board after next year.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mosher. I thought I saw some hands up over here. Ms. Van Twyver and Mr. Kaufman?
I'm gonna be really flip about this and say, only, I'd vote for this only if the Chamber of Commerce will deal with all the phone calls that'll come in, when people can't take their vacations when they want to, when the, when we tried to change the date for graduation, wait, am I on the wrong end? I think I'm on the wrong end. I mean, there, if, if they take the complaints and we didn't have to deal with them, I'd vote for it, 'cause they're gonna be busy, right?
Thank, thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. I, I'd just like to comment. We appreciate the business community, 'cause without the business community, nobody has a job, and I can appreciate the sensitivity of the tourist industry and the hospitality industry, which happens to bring in the most money to the state of New Hampshire, so I understand their sensitivity. They need staffing on that particular weekend, and when the kids are shuffling and getting ready to go to school, I understand their impact. So, I think we have to acknowledge the reasons why they're asked. They wanna keep their shop open so they can employ people, so people can afford the taxes to pay for the education. I think this is gonna be a DOA, once, if we ever take a vote on it, but we do thank the community, the businesses, for providing work to our spouses who are not in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments on this? I just wanna, I just wanna say that we're gonna make decisions that's based best, what is best for our families and students when we start and end school, and not for what's best for business, although, as, you know, the business community is part of our community, but we have to, our priority is our, our students and our families. Okay, so, moving on, we are at police presence at board meetings. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. This was something that came up a few weeks ago. I'll just take note, the police are not here tonight, so I guess that was a temporary blip in time, and we can leave it at that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay. All right, so, we are on to the public comments period. Mr. Marku?
Adam Marku, Forge, Delory Lane, I'm president of the Nashville Teachers Union. I'll speak for myself and not the union right now. I'll bring this to my board. I think the fact that this is driven politically and other motives to start school after Labor Day is ridiculous. We've started school here, and almost every other district in the city, the state starts before Labor Day, for many of the reasons mentioned already. I don't support this whatsoever. I think, in some aspects, it's a way to get cheap labor from the high school kids. The fact that it's surrounded over Labor Day, and as a president of a labor union, see big problems with that. But to echo some of what Mr. Kaufman said, I do have a great respect for our Chamber of Commerce in Nashua, they do a lot for our city, and I'm glad that they brought this forward to have a conversation before their board voted, give this board and the city a chance to discuss it. You know, if they're gonna do that with Labor Day, then why aren't they discussing closing schools in May for the tourist seasons for Memorial Day? You know, I get Labor Day is the last weekend of the summer, but Memorial Day really kicks off the summer tourist season, I guess, so if you're gonna do both, you know, maybe we can talk about it, you know, because getting out on May 25th would be fine with me, but. You don't like that, Dan?
That's best for the children.
No, Dan, it's best for me, but, yes, when it's convenient. So.
Then there's April vacation.
Yeah, there's April vaca, you know, it's just a domino effect, and I think that in New Hampshire, we have had the local control, and I, I think that's important, because what works for Nashua may not work for Manchester, or Laconia, or Moltenboro, notice I'm getting to the touristy part, because I don't think anyone's coming to Nashua for tourism, I don't think. So, that's, I will bring this to the union executive board and board of directors, that's four of your seven units that you were talking about, and bring this back when you guys bring it up again. Thank you.
Adam, you better watch out for that cultural center downtown.
I'll be a mockery for them, Adam. Deb Howes? Adam?
Thank you. Deb Howes, give my address at 7C Taggart Drive in Nashua, and I've been a teacher here for 15 years. I'm also vice president of the Nashville Teachers Union. Again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the whole union, 'cause we haven't had a chance to bring this to our board, but I would second that sentiment that we do not wanna look at starting school after Labor Day. As much as I'm a big fan of Labor Day and encourage everyone to celebrate all the hard working people we have in this country on that day, I cannot, in good conscience, support something that would make the summer longer for my students. I've worked at Amer Street School for 15 years, and another week means another two or three weeks that we're working to get them back to where they were when we left in June. So, as much as everyone thinks long summers are good, I am very concerned about the summer slide, and I wouldn't recommend doing anything that was not in the educational best interest of my students. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that brings us to board member, members' comments. I'm going to start with Ms. Van Twyver.
I have a couple of things. One, I'd like the administration to give me what their philosophy is in regard to using the iReady dashboard or tool. I've been told that it's inoperable. We've spent a lot of money on this, developing this, and I, so I'd like them to come back with a philosophy of what they're going to do with that. If we're not gonna use it, let us know. If we are, then I think we need to have a demonstration of that thing. The other thing I wanna bring up is the situation in Bedford, the recent one. I think that is very, very sad that teachers come out and stand for somebody who's a pedophile. I hope that never happens here in this district. I think those people were wrong in doing that. I don't believe anybody should bring shame upon, or bring hardship on these, on this person and try to, but, you know, there's some times you have to draw a line, whether you go with your colleagues or you stand for what's right. So, I hope that never happens in this district, 'cause if it does, I'm gonna be very, very disappointed. But I do want to know what we're going to do with the iReady diagnostic tool, or, that I call a diagnostic tool, or the dashboard tool, whatever it is that Kathy Wild developed. Like I said, if we're not gonna use it, let's say so now. I've asked for a demonstration of that, we didn't get it, and then I'm told it's inoperable because Kathy left. To me, it's a dynamite tool, it shows where you need to improve these, training on these students, so I'd like the administration to come back with a statement on that. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I just wanna make some general comments about the strategic plan information that we received. Certainly doing a lot of work on that, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it so far, but I do wanna point out a couple of flaws that I've observed in just looking at what we received this week. I'm concerned that there really is no board continuity knowledge on the committee. In other words, we don't have any previous members of the board there. The best you've got is, actually, Alderman McCarthy probably has the most budgetary knowledge on that particular committee, so there's a lack of board knowledge on that strategic planning committee, and there's a lack of financial knowledge about the district on that committee. I would also like to observe, and I'll just say it for what it is, there's no political minority voice on that committee, if you look at it. I'm concerned that the social service agencies, like United Way, or Wiz Club, and Clearway, or the Adult Learning Center are not represented. They're key partners of ours, we do a lot with the Boys and Girls Club, Clearway, my gosh, they provide such a great service for a whole lot of our kids every year, we spend over $600,000 there a year. I would also observe that, to me, there's no apparent CTE advocate or focus group, and I think that is a gap that needs to be filled. Half our students don't go to college, we need to prepare our students for life after school if they're not going on to another educational institution. I'm concerned, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I still don't believe, and I don't know how you do it with all the focus groups, the way you've scheduled them, how you could record them, or even record them just on audio. The fact that they're so scattered is going to make that job of recording, scribing, very, much more difficult than it needed to be. But I'll tell you what I think the biggest flaw is, and this will really come to bite the process in the butt when we're done, is that there is very limited student involvement. We have these, two young people who are on that committee, but there's no, it's a top-down process. It may appear to some as a, as a bottom-up process, but it's not. It's a top-down process. The administration is picking all the people, picking the facilitators, aggregating the information and presenting it. I think if you wanna successfully develop a strategic plan, this should be in the elementary schools, it should be in the middle schools, 'cause those kids, believe it or not, are the ones that you really need the buy-in from. Here's our strategic plan, we should be asking those kids in middle school, what do you, we should be asking kids in elementary school what they want in the new middle school. We should be asking the kids in middle school, how do you, what do you want us to be teaching you, two and three and four years from now, so we can get the rooms ready, the staff trained? It's a bottom-up process, skin in the game. If you go top-down the way it's presenting now, you will not get the buy-in of the students, you certainly won't get the buy-in of the staff. And that would lead me to one other thing, it's, it's gonna be considered harsh by, to some, but I'm just gonna say it because I think it needs to be said. I think using the assistant superintendents as facilitators is not going to encourage the kind of discussion that needs to occur in focus groups, which are largely intended to be brainstorming sessions and getting free flow of information. We know that there are issues in this district about people speaking to people, and if your boss comes in and conducts, facilitates a meeting about what do you want to happen in this school over the next five years, the information might be very different if it were chaired by someone who wasn't your boss, who didn't write your review, compared to someone who might have been an independent facilitator or a member of the board. So, I see that as a long-term risk, but like I said, the biggest flaw is not involving all the students and all the teachers, so everybody has skin in the game in the process. And right now, I don't see the student involvement at that level, with your survey, your electronic survey, 55,000 people, let's wait and see how many people reply, but I would rather have focus on the 11,000 kids we have. I wanna know what they want, 'cause then if you know what they want and you give it to them, they're little rocket ships, they're gonna knock the ball right out of the park every time, and we'll get, we'll see the grades, because we gave them what they wanted. Right now, we give them what we think they need, which may not be what they want, and they're disconnected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. I'm gonna move around, I'm gonna go to Ms. Ho Hensey, and then I'll go to Ms. Porter.
My turn next?
Yes, Ms. Ho Hensey.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to reiterate what Mrs. Van Twyver, Ms. Van Twyver said about the situation in Bedford. It was very tragic, and I hope it never happens again in New Hampshire. I think you need to balance First Amendment rights, but also the fact that teachers are mandatory reporters. I'll be sending a proposal to Mrs. Raymond for policy, so we can just make it clear what our expectations are, so we don't run into that in Nashua. I don't think parents or students are really happy about what happened in Bedford. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ho Hensey. Ms. Porter?
I would just like to take this opportunity to say that I attended all the graduations this year, and it was extraordinary, and I'm very proud of all of our graduates. Whatever they had to do to get there, I'm just in awe of them. It was a beautiful thing, and really, that, to me, is what it's all about. We're, we're here as a board to help students and to see them graduate and send them ready into the world, whatever it is they choose to do. So, it was, I just thoroughly enjoyed every single one. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
Oh, okay, that's, oh, I'd like to add on the strategic planning and what the kids don't know and do know. However, we did have Nash one night out last week, and we did surveys. I'm at all these meetings where there's a lot of children, and during those times, we do surveys, and those are our children, we ask them what they want, and that's across the board from K to 12, and they tell us exactly what they want, and sometimes they just want parents to leave them alone. That's one of the things that you ask on the survey. So, but they do say what they want in school and what they expect, but the way that the strategic planning is going now is quite all right with me, because I know I have done many surveys with children, and I can send you those surveys, Howard, if you'd like to see what kids really think, and then maybe you'll have a different opinion on what we should or should not ask them.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Timmons.
Yeah, I'll send them, I just said I'll send them out. I have them.
Okay. I'm gonna go to Ms. Raymond, and then Mr. Mosher.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I just have a, a few items, and they don't really go together, but I'd like to echo what Ms. Porter said. I, I thoroughly enjoyed the graduations, but especially the summer school graduation, I was so moved, I actually kinda teared up, because of the work and the hardships that some of those kids have overcome, adults now, I guess I should say, have overcome on their journey, was really amazing. And then to see all of the staff that put in all that time this summer to get them, to help them to meet their goal was, was just, it was extraordinary, and I encourage anyone to attend those in the future, they're, they're just amazing. The second thing I'd like to say regarding the Bedford situation, I worked with sexual abuse victims for many, many years, it's one of my specialties, and the idea that people could defend somebody who admitted to abusing a child and in any way allege that a child is responsible for an adult's behavior is sickening, and I, I have confidence that our district is better, and that we have good people who wouldn't do that. So, the last couple of things is just to bring the public and everybody's attention to a couple of things going on in the community. First is August 23rd, the Library Back to School Night, it's fabulous. Second is that the Soup Kitchen is collecting backpacks and school supplies, if people want to make donations, they hand those out to literally hundreds of children. There's a couple other community agencies that are also taking collections. And third is 68 Hours of Hunger through the United Way. Last year, I think they gave about 300 families meals that are distributed through the schools, and they are looking for volunteers on Wednesday nights to help package and distribute the food. So, if anybody has a little extra time and wants to give back when they're not at a school board meeting, feel free to look into that with the United Way. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Mr. Mosher?
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, thank you very much. The, you know, we live in a wonderful community. We have some of the most generous people on the face of the earth. That, they donate their clothing, they donate their food, the equipment for the, for the children to either play on or to learn from. They're just a wonderful bunch of people here. And it gives me a great pleasure to say that I have enjoyed living here for the, over 40 years now in the same place. My neighbors are also generous and wonderful. But Nashville as a whole is a wonderful place. And, you know, listening to some of the expressions of the, of the other board members, and, you know, strike me very, right, right to the heart practically, because I was always brought up to look at things, and when you find that something didn't work right, or there was a flaw in, in a plan, you went back and you reviewed the plan, and if you found something wrong with, with the way it works, or something else about it, you went back and you, you see what you could do to revise it and make it work, and make it, make it, bring it to fruition. You know, we did this years ago, we had the strategic plan, which went on for, you know, four years, five years. And we had to set up goals and objectives that went with the strategic plan. And every, every month, we'd look at that, that thing and say, well, we accomplished this, or we didn't accomplish this. But at the same time, we were working together, and when there was something wrong with the way it was going, we said, well, what, what can we do to fix it? What can we do to make it work better? And we would look at it and say, all right, this is what we can do. And I remember the, the other board members that would come in, and they would sit in on the, on the meetings, and one was a, one of the members was actually attached to it. That was Mr. Hess. And he did a wonderful job in, in steering the, the way things had go. But all together with our collective brains and our experience, and we could put it together and come up with a, with a good plan, good working plan, and be able to do this without, you know, having a lot of squabbles over, you know, who was doing what, and who was right and who was wrong, and this is, doesn't work. We should all be cooperating. We, we know that Dr. Mosley has a plan, and we should look at the plan, and if we say, well, this isn't going to work, we should go back to it and say, well, how can we make it work? Well, how can we make it better? And that's the way we should have a cooperative spirit, that we work together on this, this plan to benefit our students, our kids, and bring our collective experience to the, to the fore, and say, okay, this is what we're going to do. And then by God, go out and do it.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I would just like to say some words briefly, and I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Mosher said, working together. That's what the strategic plan is all about. And we have, I disagree that our, our assistant superintendents cannot work collaboratively in a professional relationship with, with our teachers and our administrative staff. We're all professionals. They all have common motivations and goals in this district, and that's to advance public education. So, if we, as a board, I think it's very divisive to say there's no minority voice on this strategic plan. We have a representative who has many years as a teacher, in Ms. Porter, and she is very fair and, and very open and very professional. So, I think that this plan, and I think Dr. Mosley has a great process. And that's, it's all about the process, getting to our stakeholders, and these focus groups are going to work, and this is, this is going to be a good working group. And that's what I wanted to say about that. So, that brings us to the bottom of our agenda. We have one more item, which is non-public session if needed, and that's an update on the secretarial contract negotiations. And I believe we have to go into non-public if the board so desires, and I think Mr. Donovan would, would give us an update on that. So, it's whatever the board's pleasure is on that, on that item.
Is there an update? Do we need a non-public?
If you would like an update, you would need a non-public, yes. Okay. So, it's up to the board whether we want to, go into non-public or not? Or we could do it, we could put it on next agenda, or we could do it tonight? Ms. Timmons?
I'd like to put it on the next agenda when Ms. Odens is available. She's on that negotiation team.
Okay.
So, I move to adjourn.
Okay. So, you make a, did you make a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Is a motion on the floor to adjourn?
I second it.
Second? Can you please take the roll?
On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
I'm going to, I'm going to vote no, because I think that if Mr. Donovan thought it was important enough, we should have voted to hear what he had to say. So, I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Mrs. Porter votes yes. So, that's seven yes and one no.
Thank you. The motion carries. The meeting is adjourned at 9:40.